Okay, we're gonna call the meeting to order. This is Nidek.
Nancy Cupka.
President.
Mike Davenport.
Here.
Cheryl Fuller.
Here.
Dan Nicholas.
Here.
Terry Pavisic.
Here.
Rick Pavanado.
Here.
Joanna Voskos-Drexler.
Over here.
Thank you.
Is it? I lost count. Okay, we have a quorum. Let's stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. We're gonna start this evening. We need a motion to approve the minutes from the February 24th, 2020 business meeting, the February 24th, 2020 closed meeting, the March 2nd, 2020 workshop meeting, and the March 2nd, 2020 closed meeting.
So move.
Mike?
Second.
Joanna?
Thank you.
Mike Davenport.
Aye.
Joanna Voskos-Drexler.
Aye.
Cheryl Fuller.
Aye.
Dan Nicholas.
Aye.
Terry Pavisic.
Aye.
Rick Pavanado.
Aye.
Nancy Cupka.
Aye, the meeting minutes are approved. Okay, this meeting agenda includes two opportunities for comments from the audience. The first reception of visitors is intended for audience members to address the board about any agenda item on which the board will vote. The second reception of visitors is to address the board for any topic pertaining to Community High School District 99. Comments are limited to three minutes to provide all visitors an equal opportunity to address the board. Individuals needing more time should submit their thoughts in writing to the Board Secretary, Mrs. Nidek. Visitors addressing the board need to come to the microphone, stay respectfully away from it, and state your full name. The proceedings are being taped-recorded for the purpose of producing accurate meeting minutes. And then I reserve the right to modify these protocols if circumstances warrant. Audience observations of these protocols is appreciated. In addition, two things, well, we have some seats available, but just so people know that due to CDC recommendations, we only allow 40 visitors to attend this meeting at any one time. So if we go over 40, we're gonna ask people to move out into the other room. If all seats are taken, please, we're gonna ask you to wait in the cafeteria and continue to maintain social distancing. The other thing I just wanna comment on is we, last time, we extended, I don't remember, last fall, we changed the board policy to limit any subject to 30 minutes. So, last time, we let everybody speak because it was, there were a lot of people there who wanted to speak. So we're gonna ask you respectfully, we're gonna limit it to 30 minutes this time because we do wanna let people leave the area. So, does anybody wanna approach the board about anything we're voting on tonight? One?
Could our visitors, guys, could you just come in and grab a seat so that we maintain appropriate spacing? And we need to limit the number of people that are in the room. Thank you.
And if you are standing or sitting with people, please make sure you're at least six feet apart.
Am I able to speak now?
Yes, you have to say your name, Mr. Brooks.
Hi, my name is Dewan Brooks, and I am the Director of Bands here at Downers Grove South. I know that I get three minutes to talk, so I'll keep it very brief. I'm here out of humility for all my students and the community that is fighting for me to keep my job. And I was told by someone that I respect really highly that if I would have fought as hard as my parents have for me, maybe things would be different, so I'm here. I wanna speak to tell you a couple of things. I left California to come here to this place to study music at Northwestern, and I never thought that I would find a community of students and families that I would love to teach. And I have come to love this place. Through my time here, I have had some really difficult times as a black staff member here, and I have tried my best to hide that from my students and to give them the best educational experience ever, taking them to Northwestern and giving them a sense of community, which is what I had there, and I wanted to bring that here so much. I think that, for me, I just wanted to speak and say that I teach the students always about trust in one another and what braving means. And one of the biggest struggles I had as a staff member here was the interactions that I've had with some of the staff members, being called the N-word, other identities that I experienced in this building, and then being told that when I focus on those things, that I'm not reflective. I'm a teacher who has, who's been excellent-rated both years, and yes, has a lot of things that I can also grow through, and I always ask for that growth and try my best to grow, because my students have always been my priority, and bringing them through the trenches as much as I can. And for me, those are the things that I wanted to speak to you on, because no matter what, even though those experiences that I've had here have kinda ruffled me up, I still came to work every day. I worked really hard for my students to give them everything that I could. And I'm sorry.
It's okay.
I'm sorry to all of you that this is happening. And I believe that I belong here, but I also understand that you have to make the decision that's best for you. I am a kind person who tells them that every day we perform, this is the last thing I'll say, we perform to put something beautiful into the world with other people, to give people something to remember, and no matter what happens today, I hope they know that and that they believe that, because for me, that's what matters. And I appreciate you listening to me and giving the opportunity to kinda get to know me and meet me as a human being and as a person in this space. So, as someone who is reflecting and as someone who is also trying to grow as a person and share that with my students, I appreciate all of you. Thank you.
Thank you.
You're not so tall. My name is Cindy Lester. I think you all know who I am. On the first day of marching band season two years ago this week, my son was still in eighth grade, and one of the longstanding marching band staff asked me if my son was That staff member told me that a kid like him, who has autism and anxiety disorder, had no place in marching band or any band. I was horrified. The next day, I complained to other directors in the music department, and no one did anything. Nothing was done. I was told that it was simply a misunderstanding, like I had misheard the use of the R-word when describing my son. It wasn't until Mr. Brooks that was on staff and in the building that that staff member was told that his contract would not be renewed for this year. That's what Mr. Brooks does, and he calls out bullies, whether it's parents, students, or staff. Let the faculty and staff do their job as experienced teachers and mentors. Let them mentor him. If you don't think he's a good enough teacher, then you guys need to be better teachers. Mr. Brooks, like all of us, is not unteachable. He would never remove a student from band for being unteachable, never, and neither should you. You are elected officials, the nine of you here. The superintendent works for you, don't forget that. Please don't make your elected duty a simple rubber stamping of what someone else told you to do. As elected officials, you work for us, your constituents, those of us who vote and those who attend District 99 schools. You should focus your attention on the hundreds and thousands who are urging you to renew Mr. Brooks's contract. Thank you.
I'm Missy Teppi, an alumni of the class of 2019. It's still incredibly difficult to understand how such an incredible educator's career here in District 99 is being held in limbo. It's absurd to me that not only do I have to take the time to come back to this school, but even more so the fact that Dewan Brooks, out of all people in this district, is who you're looking at. From the first day Dewan Brooks stepped into this school district, he has put everything he has into his career and into his students. From his first audition with the volunteer ensemble that myself and many of my peers participated in, it was abundantly clear that he had the energy and the commitment to bring every single student in the band program as a whole to success if we were to apply ourselves, and by looking at what this program has achieved under his direction, his skill is undeniable. For any band class here, Dewan Brooks has revolutionized the approach and success for each and every single one of our programs and every single one of his students, and to deny that, and to deny that fact is to deny not just the hard work and planning he puts into the program, but it is also denying every single student here, every single student at the last board meeting, and every single student he has ever come into contact with, the pride and effort that we have put in thanks to what he has taught us. To remove Dewan Brooks from the program that he has raised, the students that he has mentored, from everything he has made here would be to take him from his home. It would be to take him from where he is unequivocally welcome amongst students, and it would be taking him from where he genuinely belongs. To remove Dewan Brooks from his position here with his family would be to further deny every student who has ever felt seen under his direction their visibility and comfort. Taking a look at the diversity within the music department, the change that has occurred while he's been here is drastic, upholding values that the district holds as well. Across not, or even, across even only my own, or my one year with him, he brought in numerous instructors with the hopes that each and every single one of his students could see themselves, and the impact of that was massive. Hearing his never-ending support as I walked into the band room every day last year, whether it was his mantra, "I'm black and I'm beautiful," with some of his students, or the loving greetings he gave every student, is something that legitimized and substantiated his respect and admiration for all of us. If you were to review the amount of non-white students in band this year compared to last year, the difference is staggering, and the only change is the atmosphere that Mr. Brooks has created, giving every student a safe space within District 99 whenever needed. To remove Dewan Brooks from his position would be telling those students of color that their representation doesn't matter. It would be removing someone who created a healthy environment for marginalized students when they never had one in this school. Removing him would blatantly ignore the injustice and discrimination that marginalized students still go through on a daily basis within this district, because you would be removing someone who has constantly fought against it. I urge you all to strongly consider Mr. Brooks as a whole educator, not just the portion that you see. I urge you to consider the impact that your decision will have on this community, and I urge you to reconsider the fact that the removal of Dewan Brooks from his current position in the DGS band family will be a decision that will deny every single one of his students the right to comfort, success, representation, and justice. And finally, I urge you to reconsider your values as individuals and as a board, and to contemplate whether or not your decision made here tonight is one that upholds those values. Thank you.
My name is Kate Snover. I'm a freshman here at DGS. And as you heard Mr. Brooks talk about earlier, every, after every marching band rehearsal, he would say we had this wonderful opportunity to put something beautiful into the world. And I had this opportunity to speak to you, so I'm gonna take that opportunity to keep something beautiful in the world. Mr. Brooks, every day I walk into concert band, first period, 8:00 AM, everyone's tired, but he gre, he greets everyone with a smile and with warmth, and every day he puts his best effort forward, as I like to think we do the same, to make us sound like a great band. Not only does he teach us music, he teaches us kindness and acceptance. And when you're talking about teacher, you want them to do your job, their job obviously, but to teach something like kindness, acceptance, accountability, that's something I look for in a teacher. And I'm happy every day to know that I start the day with him. It brings me a lot of joy. Last week, he said, "We were never going to forget him." And he's right. I'm never gonna forget Mr. Brooks. And I know you have business to do. I know this is a difficult decision, and I wanna say I'm not angry. I understand the, what you have to do. Obviously, the community, everyone around us, we want the best for him, I want the best for him, I'm sure you want the best for him, but he also wants the best for us no matter where he goes, 'cause in the end, family supports family. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Morgan Erickson, and I'm currently a junior here at Downers Grove South. I have had the absolute pleasure to work with Mr. Brooks since he started his career here at DGS. And in my 15 years of education, he was the first teacher that told me it was okay to be myself. And as someone who has struggled in my life, that was something I really needed to hear. And I wanted to keep my message short, and I wanted to keep it transparent, and I wanted to be honest. Mr. Brooks has built a community at Downers Grove South that is absolutely gorgeous. He comes into school every single day talking about kindness, talking about acceptance, talking about diversity. Mr. Brooks is truly, truly the center of the band program and the music program as a whole here at Downers Grove South. I urge you to reconsider your decisions, and I urge you to listen to the students who are desperately trying to be heard right now. Mr. Brooks is professional, Mr. Brooks is kind, and Mr. Brooks is always reaching out for those students around him. I implore you to make the right decision. Thank you.
My name is Matthew Fisher. I'm a senior at DGS. To kinda build off the idea of community in the band program, two weeks ago, Mr. Brooks was not at school. Throughout that two weeks, each period of every day, the band room felt much emptier, and it was obvious to everyone that everybody felt something was missing during band, study hall, and any free period that Mr. Brooks has ever been here for our students. I knew that things wouldn't be the same without Mr. Brooks, but it never melt, it never felt more real than the other week when he wasn't here. The moment that he came back, you could tell that the band room, the music wing, the fine arts department was alive again. That gap in feeling of something being missing was filled the second that Mr. Brooks came back. I could echo what everybody has already said and the amount of, in everything that was said the past couple months, but truthfully, the amount of support for the continuation of his contract speaks for itself. This is what the overwhelming majority of the students and parent body want, and it's clear that it is what, and it's clear that it's what is in the best interest of our students here at South. As parents, educators, and individuals, you know that if the, if the decision you make is truly in the best interest of your students, Mr. Brooks's contract should be renewed. Thank you.
I'm gonna talk actually now, away from the mic. Hi, everybody. Good evening. My name is Jake Burroughs, and I am a sophomore at the University of Illinois. I am studying music education. So, Brene Brown once said, and my family's always said this, that there's power to a single story, and so I wanna start the story with my whole friend. I have always been in love with music, and I am a very, very big lover of this program. I did not really interact with Mr. Brooks in the classroom, and what I think was really interesting was the fact that he still advocated for the individual when I saw him. So, when I see he advocated for the individual, I think about my experience with him. In Music Education, we have a conference that is called IVA, Illinois Music Educators Association Conference that happens in January. And he, there's thousands of educators, and he's very well-known there. However, the fact that he came up to me and reached out was something that I will never forget. He said to me, "Jake, one day, I'm going to buy you your first baton." And for music educators, the first baton is something like, you're getting your wand at Harry Potter's old range shop. It's something that you will always carry with you. So I bring this today because I actually got the opportunity and privilege to choose out my baton with Dewan. This I have used in concerts already. I'm a sophomore in music education, and every single time I think about this baton, I think about him, and I think about the fact that he advocated for me. I'm a sophomore. I am learning. And yet, when I went into his classroom to observe, to observe the wind ensemble, he said, "Get up on the podium." I said, "What?" And I got up for the podium, and he gave me a lesson. I got to conduct the wind ensemble. Now, it's not just about conducting the wind ensemble. Then he said that I am a part of an organism. I'm like, "What are you saying? What is this organism?" You're part of an organism where you create a connection with the band, with the students around you, and with yourself. Waving a stick, that's emotion. What's powerful about being a music educator is the connection you make, the organism that you create. Well, I can tell you first off that Dewan, Mr. Brooks, is the, is the person, the foundation that creates this organism, that creates this brand program, that has made this band program something. It's not about the first place, it's not about the trophies and the dirty old case. It has to do with the heart and with people. That's what Mr. Brooks is all about. We advocate for the individual, he talks about diversity. Well, I am here to say that I am gay. I am gay, and I have always wondered what is it going to be like to be a music educator as a gay man? And yet, when I saw Mr. Brooks and when I told him that, he said, "It's just the exact same. All you have to do is be yourself, create that connection with your kids, and advocate for that individual." That's what this is about. And so I-
Sir, your three minutes is expired.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Olivia Bellicky, and I am part of many of the bands here at South. I think not renewing Mr. Brooks's contract is a big mistake that we shouldn't make. I have only had barely one year in band, and he's done so much to positively impact my life. For example, he's given me the family and band that I look up to and I love. Through this, he has made our band perform so much better, and most of this is not only from him being amazing mentor, but telling us that kindness and respect always comes first. The loving environment that he has created in band is what allows our marching band to achieve such high standards on and off the field. On the days Mr. Brooks is sick, the band room feels empty. He's the person that gives everyone the inspiration to strive to be their best self and hold themselves accountable for their actions. He is the one that makes me want to practice and come to rehearsal. Mr. Brooks is the one that encourages me to grow as a musician. I'm not only a percussionist in concert band and a xylophone player in marching band, but I love to try new instruments. This year, I'm trying to be a marching snare, but it just, I don't feel good about my playing abilities. One day, when I was heading to a practice room, Mr. Brooks said, "Wow, I didn't even give you a second glance. You look so natural with the snare. You're gonna do great things next year." And that was all I needed for the validation of my abilities. Once again, I think you should seriously reconsider renewing his contract, as he's essential to the success and the family of the band program. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Annie White. I actually started the petition. As many of you know, it's 50 away from 5,000 signatures, so I have these signatures here today.
Thank you.
Yes. I can remember being in middle school and being beyond excited to join the band program just because of Mr. Brooks. I had heard about all of the amazing things he had done with the band and just how much of a figure he was, and I wasn't disappointed. Under Mr. Brooks's direction, our marching band took first in the U of I state championships for the first time in quite a while. I firmly believe that the reason for this victory was his belief in our band. Throughout the season, Mr. Brooks pushed us to be our best and incorporated teamwork into our regimes. He truly treated us like professionals, and returned, we worked like professionals. I don't think I've ever been so inspired to work so hard, a passion that still runs through me in concert bands. Recently, Mr. Brooks was absent for an extended period of time. This gave me a look into what a possible future could be without him. The band room was so incredibly dull, and all the bright energy that Mr. Brooks contributes every day had been sucked out of the room. The room usually resonated with the beautiful colors of music, but now it felt gray and quiet. I felt an injustice for my music education while he was gone. I don't take my education in music lightly. I plan to pursue music in college. With his vast knowledge and experience, Mr. Brooks is most definitely the best person to prepare me for this future. Please, I beg of you, let him continue to lead us.
I am another student that goes to Downers Grove South High School. I'm gonna start off with just saying-
Could you state your name for the record, please? Anne, speak up.
I'm Kid Bodney Reed. And I'm gonna start off with that I see a lot of faces here that I can tell are just closed doors and aren't gonna be fully, and haven't been fully taking in what these students have been saying. And what these students have been saying is very important. What these students have been saying is very important, because this is their experience with a phenomenal band director who has done nothing but stand up for students' rights, which is what teachers should be doing anyways. I wrote this in a letter, and I'll say it again, that some, some teachers just want to see kids succeed in their class. Others want to see them succeed in life. But what we don't see often, and what Mr. Brooks does, is he gives, he helps us succeed. He gives us the tools and advice. He doesn't just teach music, he gives life skills, which is something that not a lot of teachers have been giving. You know, we have math teachers saying, "Oh, 2 plus 2 is 4. Yeah, that's nice. When am I gonna use that?" Mr. Brooks is giving us life skills that we can use in the future, which, how many people do you see even doing that? He's open to things like, he cares about the students. I don't really know how to say that besides that he wants us to succeed, and he will help us succeed, he will stand up for us, which is something that a lot of us can't do. Personally, I've been struggling with depression for a very long time. I've been out of school most of this year because of that. And yes, some of the teachers here are very acceptable, accepting of that, but Mr. Brooks has been helping me through that. I'll be honest, that he's one of the main reasons I am still alive on this day. If it weren't for him, many of us, I can guarantee you, 'cause I know for a fact, I am not the only person struggling in this school, let alone this very room. If it weren't for him, a lot of us wouldn't be able to express ourselves the way we are, and some of us need more time, and if you were to get rid of him now, a lot of people won't be able to reach their full potential, in which, how do you know that one of them can be able to cure the coronavirus? We don't know that. One of them could save humanity, we don't know that, and by firing Mr. Brooks, you're not gonna let them become who they fully are. Like, you're just eliminating possible potential, and this school is all about diversity. It tries to be. Firing Mr. Brooks, that's just gonna get rid of your key factor. It's not gonna do anything, it's gonna set the school back, and this school has been struggling, I've seen it. And firing him is just gonna make it all worse.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Samantha Torres. I previously spoke on this issue with regards to his teaching and impact on the kids and my own children's lives as musicians. Today, I would like to speak on the four domains of assessment. First being planning and prep, classroom and environment, instruction, professional responsibilities. Areas one and, one through three have been spoken upon at the last meeting and proven based on testimonies and results from the shows and the reaction from these kids. The fourth domain then comes into question, which then makes this a more personal issue than personnel issue. He communicates effectively with parents-
Excuse me, I'm sorry to interrupt, but what was the fourth domain?
The fourth domain being professional responsibilities.
Thank you, I'm sorry to interrupt you, I just kinda lost track, sorry.
Okay. He communicates effectively with parents on and off the field, whether face-to-face or email. He participates professionally in the community, working as an educator, providing teaching opportunities at multiple school sites, and even with private lessons, all evident in the plethora of testimonies and comments from supporting districts and families. At events, whether judged on appearances out of school uniforms or size of the band, he has always held his head high and been professional, never setting a bad example for the kids. That takes courage, honor, restraint, and dignity. The kids learn from that. They model his example and always put their best foot forward by silencing the noise, by putting it all out on the field by their performance, always smiling with a head held high. When they've had a low, he has talked them up with nothing but encouraging words. As for books and reports, we see the reports during our meetings. Everything seems to be in order and accounted for. And as for reflection, all I can say is a man who does not take time to reflect on self-growth and improvement can never be a man who can do what he has done with these kids and their maturity, honesty- kids and their maturity on and off the field, accepting accountability for all actions and lack of. In his first year, there was a well-known issue with the football team, which has been, since been rectified and resolved. Now I see two teams who have respect for each other on and off that field, and they applaud each other. That takes work on both parts. Now both teams and leaders have mutual respect. Improvement cannot be done in any relationship if self-replaction is not done. The personal growth from last year to this year has been leaps and bounds in the upward trajectory. This is evident by the students and the love and the passion they have for him and this program. Otherwise, we would have a group of 200-plus students who are self-involved and entitled. He is the best director this school has had, and it would be a shame to see him teach somewhere else. If any of these domains are reason for non-renewal, then I question, when did remediation happen? A verbal warning, a written warning with appropriate, with proper guidelines and direction from senior tenured staff or even the principal, with an appropriate timeframe to demonstrate growth? Has that happened? If there were, if this was not afforded to him, then I have to say, he did not fail this student, this school, or this district. The failure started at the top and ended at the top. And he was set up to fail from the beginning without the proper guidance needed to rectify any errors in process. You saw his greatness and potential as a leader once, when you initially decided to take him onboard. Try to put the differences aside and remember that.
My name is Ruth Ila Bodley, and first, I want to say thank you, because you covered a bunch of what I was gonna talk to you about with the four domains and Danielson. I don't know how familiar each of you are, but as a teacher myself, I am familiar with those a lot, and so your gratitude goes back here. But what I really want to say to each and every one of you is you're also a member of my community. You're a member of the community that I live in, that I choose to stay in because my child gets the education that they get here. And for the record, my child is that kid there who said he's alive because of Dewan Brooks. I will tell you a story, one single story, that should really emanate for all of you, and I won't tell you who the perpetrator of this action was, but I will tell you that one day, when my child wanted to try to get some security, we were here for, I believe it was the holiday choir concert, and we came, and Kit couldn't do it. And Kit fell apart, and I was trying to get him out of the space that we were in, out of the theater, and what did my child say? I wanna see Mr. Brooks. I said, honestly, honey, I don't think he's here. And we went, and we looked for Brooks, and Brooks wasn't there, and we sat on the floor outside of Mr. Brooks' office, and my child fell apart. And I have never been so scared in all of my life of this day, and we've had a lot of days that should have been scarier. He fell apart, he lie on the floor outside of the office sobbing. And another member of the band team walked out of an office, saw us sitting there, looked at me, looked at my son, and said, everything okay? Clearly not. First of all, the stupidest question you could ever ask if someone's lying on the floor falling apart. And I introduced myself and my child, because I knew this person didn't know who I was, and I said, we're just having a little bit of a hard time. And that person turned around, grabbed their keys, and left the building. Dewan Brooks would never have done that. You are listening to people who are leading you astray, and quite frankly, the fact that some of you won't make eye contact with me or are spending too much time on your computers while people are up here talking about not just a man's career, but the lives of every student that he could impact here at Downers Grove South and may end up impacting somewhere else, because you are foolish enough not to stop and listen, not to realize that kids don't come out to board meetings for teachers that are doing bad things. They come out for teachers that express the importance of diversity, they come out for teachers that show them how to be themselves, they come out for teachers who save their lives, not because they stop one individual moment or even walk away, but because they spend every moment of their lives living for their kids. Dewan Brooks is available for his students every single moment of their lives, and as I mentioned to you the last time I was here-
Ma'am, your time is expired.
Dewan Brooks is the only teacher in this school who's bothered to check in on my child.
If anybody else would like to address the board on another topic, welcome to.
Any other topics? Okay, before we come back to our agenda, I would like to just address some of the things that were said here today, and some of the things that I've read in many of the emails that we've gotten, and I'm gonna invite my board members, if they'd like to say anything afterwards, they can as well. But I would just like to address in generalities. First of all, I'm very glad you're all here, and I'm very glad that Mr. Brooks has made such a positive impact in your life, and I am very glad you are here. So, and we're very glad that you are who you are, and I'm not talking to Mr. Davies, who's sitting in front of you blocking you. I'm talking to you, Kit. We all are glad you are here, and we all are glad you are who you are. But I want to address some of the things that I've heard tonight and that I've heard before, just in generalities. The first is, although sometimes it may seem such, we are not a rubber-stamping board. We have a lot of heated discussion, no teacher is retained, or let go, or disciplined, or whatever, or student, without a lot of discussion that is going back and forth between administration and the board. So we are not a rubber-stamping board. Number two, orientation and mentoring. All teachers, all of our teachers get extensive mentoring throughout the duration of their career, but new teachers especially, even if they've taught somewhere else before, go through substantial orientation and mentoring. There is a program, and then the principals and the chairs and the deans, they continue to assess what that individual teacher needs. Some teachers need more, some teachers need less, but that is available for them. So please don't walk out of here and think that that is not available to our instructors. Our academic staff and our administrative staff are very important to us. We certainly do provide them. Unfortunately, what everybody has said here, I just want us to be very clear, you are not representative of all students. I know you're representative of all people who are being here, who are here, but I'm, and you're just gonna have to trust me in this, you are not representative of all students. And I've heard people say, well, there's two or three students in this school that simply don't want to be held accountable. Please don't, first of all, that's A, not true, B, don't diminish any student's voice, because we listen to every student's voice. You are all important to us. They may have been in the minority, they may not, we've never actually counted. We look at a lot of things when we evaluate teachers and whether we're gonna retain them, and certainly their ability to interact well with students is one of those, but they're just, that's just one element of what a teacher is evaluated on. But don't ever discount the minority of the students, because you only have to look at the history of civil rights in this country to know that the majority is not always right. So we never discount the minority. We've listened to all students, all parents, all community members who have reached out to us, and I just want to assure you of that one last time. Now, what's gonna happen a little bit further down in the agenda is we're gonna take a vote. We, one member, I should have prefaced this whole thing by saying, one member never speaks for the board. We're gonna take a vote, each member is gonna vote in the best interest of the students and the best interest of the school district from their perspective. We may agree, we may not agree, but when we walk out of here, we are all going to be civil to each other, because we respect each other's opinion. And that brings me to something that I really want to direct to Mr. Brooks' students, and that is this. After the last board meeting, there was bullying, harassment, and a toxic environment in that classroom. I don't know who all was involved, but my understanding is, it went from students who want Mr. Brooks to be retained, I appreciate your passion, towards students who are indifferent or had a differing view. That is not acceptable. It's not acceptable for you to bully another student, whatever their thought is, and it's not acceptable to stand by and watch for it, watch it happen and not intervene. So I'm gonna hope, whatever this vote becomes, we're not gonna, we're not gonna see that kind of behavior again. It's not the Mustang way. It's certainly not something that Mr. Brooks has imbued into your psyche about how you are to behave. So I'm gonna ask you, please, for your students who have a differing opinion, I hope that you show them the respect that these board members are gonna show each other tonight. Do I have anybody else who wants to add to that?
No, I think that was very well said. Thank you very much.
Gentlemen? Okay.
Thank you, Nancy.
All right, so, reception of visitors is over, we will, unless, did anybody else want to address the board on any other thing we're gonna vote on tonight? Hearing none, we need, oh, recommendations and reports to superintendent.
Yep. This is the evening where we provide the board the overview of curricular offerings and staffing for the following year. Just to give you the general overview, well, I'll let Pete give the general overview, but he's here to give all of that. As I said, last board meeting, we're up a little bit in a couple of areas. One is special ed. Our special education numbers have grown across the district, especially at North High, it's outpaced South High. We've also increased numbers in a couple of curricular areas, which Pete will focus on a little bit, but I'm very proud that the areas that we're growing in connect directly to board goals. So I'm gonna turn it over to Pete to lead you through this recommendation that comes every year to the board.
Pete, Pete, the only request I have is because of the room setup, can you let us know what-
Absolutely.
File your recommendations.
Which artifact?
Sure. So to start with, again, this will be a multi-person presentation. In the artifacts entitled Section 1, I will start off by discussing those. Then Gina Zaccardi will jump in and discuss artifacts for Section 2. Then Scott Wu-Gazer will discuss the artifact for Section 3. And then Hank will talk about Sections 4, 5, and 6. All right, so that's kind of the order by which we will proceed here. So the first artifact, which is the Section 1 memo, we'll wait here a minute, that's the charts of the memo there, provides kind of the same overview that I orally just gave you, but to highlight a few things, as Dr. Thiele referenced, we are recommending an increase in our instructional FTE as well as our non-instructional FTE. Some of that was outlined for you at previous board meetings. The instructional FTE will be an increase of 3.2 FTE for next year. This is due in large part to 916 more course requests for the 2021 school year than we had for the 1920 school year. In particular, the areas that are growing, special education at North High, bilingual education at South, the culinary program at South, and the brand-new internship classes at both campuses. So as Dr. Thiele said, we're very excited that some of the newer programs that the board has supported and approved the last few years are paying off with strong student selection for those courses. So we're happy to see that occurring overall. When we add in the non-instructional FTE that has been discussed previously, it brings us to a total increase of 7.4 FTE from the 1920 to the 2021 school year. So if we could put the chart up on the board here then, please? Now, go back, there you go, thank you. So the chart, as you may recall, we amended last, for last year's Section 1 meeting, the top part is showing you the instructional FTE for the district. That 322.8 is a 3.2 increase in FTE because of the areas that I just referenced. The bottom part of the chart, the non-instructional FTE, we highlighted in yellow, the changes from the prior year. So this includes the psychologists, the PATH program, social work that has been discussed previously, and that Scott will highlight a little bit more when he gets to the Section 3 artifact. But overall, we're looking at 7.4 between the instructional and non-instructional increases. So before I turn it over to Gina, do I have any questions or things that I can clarify at this point?
So Pete, remind me, what, I know we're looking at course requests, what is enrollment numbers for next year compared to this year?
So the enrollment numbers are up, over 50 students at North currently, and a little bit up at South, and so because of that, and it looks like we have more students that are opting to take seven courses over six, and part, I think, because of the enticing new programs that we have added in the last couple of years, that's resulted in such a huge increase in the course requests.
Thank you.
All right, and at this time, we'll turn it over to Gina.
Thank you. So I'll take a few moments just to highlight some things about the courses that we have opted or are recommending for cancellation, as well as those with an enrollment under 20 that we are recommending that the board approve. Courses, 20 is sort of the key amount there, number of students required when we look at courses, that's our threshold, and that includes general-level courses as well as AP courses, but not necessarily intervention courses. So I'm very pleased to report that we have three fewer courses. There's been a decrease in the number of courses recommended for cancellation, which is a really good sign. And consequently, there's an increase in the number of courses with an enrollment less than 20 that we are recommending for approval. So looking at some of the courses that are recommended for cancellation, a couple of these, the board will note, we have seen before, several of them, like AP Art History, Theater Design, Forensics, Oral Interpretation are courses that we have had either every year or over the years canceled due to lower enrollment. In terms of the courses recommended for approval that are under 20, you'll note that several of these courses are the top-level course in a sequence, or very close to. So for example, Project Lead the Way Engineering Design and Development is a course in which we have enrollment at North High that is less than 20, and that really is the highest-level course in that sequence of four courses. You'll also note Human Body Systems, a new course the board just approved. We were very pleased, granted, an enrollment of 19, but for the first year, being the highest-level courses and students having to meet different criteria to be able to enroll in that course, we are recommending that we run that course at 19 at North High and 17 at South High. We also have a couple of courses recommended under 20 for approval that, again, are the highest level of a language, like Spanish 5, in many cases, AP German, and AP German in both schools. Those are just a few highlights of those courses that are recommended for approval or cancellation. Are there any questions before I turn it over, I believe, to Scott? Thank you.
So if you could put up the Section 3 Special Services FTE memo? Scott?
Good evening. Okay, so I'm gonna highlight some of the areas in Special Services in our C-triple-S. So like Pete mentioned, we do have an increase of 2.2 FTE at North, and that is, a lot of it is going towards supporting co-teaching and our instructional programming. And then South has an increase of .2. And then at T-99, which we call T-99 slash our district, is the psychologist position that's a 1.0. And then, so that equals a 3.4 FTE increase overall for Special Services. And then at North High for C-triple-S, we have the social worker that we talked about previously at a .6 FTE. And then we have the PATH program at North, which is a .4, and that's working with our in-school intervention program. And then at South, again, for the PATH program, we have a .6 FTE- And then at South, again, for the PATH program, we have a .6 FTE dedicated to that program.
So that's a total of 4.4?
Well, 3.4 for Special Services, and then the one, and then another, so 1.6 for our C-triple-S.
Okay.
So yeah, that goes up.
Five.
Five, yes.
Yeah, about three-quarters of our additional FTE this year is in this area. So special education and then counseling and support services.
Very good.
All right. And then moving on to the last sections. Section 4 looks at the resolution authorizing non-tenured teachers other than final-year probationary teachers to be non-renewed. This will come later as an action item in the agenda. Then Section 5 outlines the retention of tenured staff, tenured staff that are being recommended to return for another year at both campuses. And then the final one is the one that can get confusing at times because these are sometimes fourth or, or teachers going into their fourth year or their fifth year that have received excellent ratings throughout, or high enough ratings throughout their entire tenure with us, well, their entire time with us, so that the state will grant them tenure. Just a reminder, we do not grant teachers tenure by bringing them back with successful ratings for a certain period of time, then the state grants them tenure. So by bringing them back for either the fourth or fifth year, depending on where they fall in their career, then the state will grant them tenure upon us doing that. So any questions on any of those?
I just want to say that there's a few teachers on the list here that my families have personal experience with, and I'm excited to see them move forward with tenure.
All right. With that being said, that's the overview that comes every year at this point. Many of these items show up in the consent agenda, some of them fall under action this evening, but the administration recommends all of these actions moving forward.
If I could just add one last thing, I would be remiss if I didn't mention the work that Georgia Hash, Sarah Corrington, Gina, Scott, Lisa Balo, the two department chairs in Special Services, Alyssa Gunderson and Joy Burnett, did in putting this all together. There's, you know, the documents make it look pretty simple and succinct. There's a lot of work that went on behind the scenes for us to get to the point where we're able to present it in this fashion to the board. So I just want to thank that group for all the work they did in putting this together.
And typically, Georgia and Sarah would be here, but in trying to cut down the numbers of people in the room, we asked them to stay home this evening. But yes, as Pete said, this starts in late October and goes right up until now, so it's thousands of hours of work to get to this point.
Thank you.
All right. We're going to have Mark come forward and talk about activity buses, or is it Jim? No, Jim's coming forward.
It's the hair, it's hard to tell.
Yeah, hard to tell them apart, yeah.
Good evening, everyone. We got like three award bids tonight. The first will be for activity buses. So we went out to bid to replace three and add one. These are multifunctional school buses and activity buses used for a variety of athletics and activities. The three that we're replacing are 2008 models with a lot of mileage, we're putting a lot of work in them. So the replacement of those was inevitable, we're dumping a lot of money into it. So we're looking at getting four and adding one to South. Currently, we have eight in our district, five at South, and three at North, and we're going to add one more to South as we trade the three in. Funding for this will come out of the Transportation Fund to offset some special education costs because it's also used for our Transition 99. And secondly, the lead time for this is four months out, so 16 weeks. So we're looking at the next budget year to finance this. So we put out bid specifications, we had four bidders out of the vendors. Southwest Bus and Mobility from Breeze, Illinois was the lowest in qualified and acceptable bidder, so we're looking at later to accept an award of $200,372 with trade-in values to offset for $7,500.
I have a question, and it's not related to the buses, I'm sorry, but what is, I was reading about the teams, what is DECA? Is it Decathlon?
No, that's like business competition.
Oh, okay, okay.
Business and entrepreneurship.
These are used by, they are daily and nightly by many of our, and really, we offset so much funds that we would spend for getting buses to take our kids and transport them. So really good program that we started back, actually, these were the first ones we bought in 2008, so 12 years old now on that. Other questions on activity buses? Okay.
Next one, Jim?
World Language Office renovation.
This is for capital project work for World Language Office here at South High School. It's renovation. We put bid documents together, we had about 11 bidders, three trades, general trades, plumbing and electric. You can see the three lowest acceptable bidders that are listed. Scope of work is for flooring, upgrades, electrical, mechanical, plumbing, making a small conference room, director's office, and kitchenette also. Furniture's included in this, and BAS controls for the HVA system. So these contracts are within the budget of our capital projects list that I brought to you in November. So tonight, we'll ask the board to approve a combined list of low acceptable bidders in the aggregate amount of $153,412.79.
Any questions for Jim? All right. And then the final one, air handler replacement at South High?
Also a capital project, this is for a replacement of an air handler here at South. We had six bidders. The low acceptable bidder was Oakbrook Mechanical. This is a replacement of a 23-year-old unit, feeds classrooms, conference rooms, offices on Highway A. Came unrepairable, we're putting a lot of work into this, we're dumping money, it's an old unit. We're looking to replace it with a 20-ton unit that's more efficient, so we'll save some electricity on that side. This is also within our capital project budget, so tonight, we're looking to award Oakbrook Mechanical in the amount of $98,800.
Any questions for Jim on any of these, or for me? All right, thank you, Jim.
Thank you.
These are all up for approval this evening. And then I'm going to bring Mark up, and he's going to talk about executing our property tax abatement for the Rex Nord facility that we entered into an agreement a few years ago on.
Is that really?
Good evening. About four years ago, we started working with the Village of Downers Grove and District 58 in pursuing a relocation of the Rex Nord Corporation's world headquarters. And it was contested between Downers Grove and a few other locations across the nation, and we were very happy to bring them in into our district. And tonight, really, it's just a formality. In 2017, we signed an agreement to abate taxes for this company over a nine-year period of time and to feather in the new construction of this large building, which is on 2400 West Curtis, just off of Belmont. And in order to give that kind of concession, we wanted to make sure that it was going to help our local economy, our village, and there's also some relationships that we're going to build with bringing students over there to work as interns and do different things with them. But the biggest things are really financial in that they agreed to increase their employee staffing to at least 200 employees and at least at an average income, gross income of $40,000. And so, really happy to see, this is the first year where we would consider the abatement, that they have, I think it's 317 employees, and the average salary is $78,000. And so it's a really nice boost for this area, and they built a beautiful, huge, 200,000-square-foot office area, which in a industrial area that was actually losing ground in terms of their assessed valuations because the properties were aging out, and so it kind of revitalized that whole area. And so tonight's action is just to, we already have the agreement in place, this is just for the board to approve, the administration to actually cause the abatement to happen at the clerk's office and for us to be able to sign those documents necessary to make that abatement.
And just a reminder, in that deal that we made as an incentive, when we did that, Illinois was not offering incentives to anybody in the state because there was no budget at that time. So our community was competing against whole other states that were offering incentives, and we were able to attract them to come here. And by doing so, we did not go backwards at all with property taxes, we just guaranteed to feather in the new money, the new value of that property over a 10-year period. So we're still moving forward on it, just slower than we would have otherwise, but that was the incentive to get them and to invest in our community.
Well, the one is too, that it is a catalyst, right? So hopefully, other businesses in the park will invest, and good things will happen as a result of that that wouldn't have happened otherwise. So, so this is great, I'm happy to support this.
This is, all the other items that you saw this evening are up for approval later on in the board meeting.
Do we have any Freedom of Information?
We did have Freedom of Information Act requests, we also have responded to them, and they are always posted fully up on our website.
Okay, we're going to move on to the consent agenda. I need a motion for the Board of Education to approve the consent agenda, which includes, I always feel like in auctioneer when I do this, personnel report 2020 to 2021, fifth foot year full-time renewals, 2020 to 2021, fourth year full-time renewals, 2020, 2021, non-tenure full-time renewals, 2020, 2021, non-tenure part-time renewals, appointment administrator, appointment certified, leave of absence certified, transition, excuse me, transfer of position classified, appointment classified, as well as the personnel report resignation certified, resignations classified, personnel report termination classified, financial pages, placement of the introduction to teaching course in the Career and Technical Education Department, the acceptance of donation Lombard Junior Women's Club, by the way, thank you very much Lombard Junior Women's Club, acceptance of donation anonymous donor, thank you to them, the SASED Board of Control Governing Board appointment, which will be Joanna with me as her backup, and the Illinois High School Association IHSA membership.
So moved.
Mike, second?
Second.
So Terry?
Terry.
You seconded.
I did.
Terry, thank you.
Before we take, before we take a vote, I just want to point out that the anonymous donation that is listed in here that you mentioned and thanked for is a donation of $250,000 to $300,000 for improvements in the Prince Street Plaza in memory of Beth Dumblaw. So that is a very large donation from an anonymous donor.
That is awesome. Thank you.
Mike Davenport?
Aye.
Terry Pavisic?
Aye.
Rick Pavanato?
Aye.
Joanna Vazquez-Drexler?
Aye.
Cheryl Fuller?
Aye.
Dan Nicholas?
Aye.
Nancy Cupka?
Aye, the consent agenda is passed. Okay, now we're going to move on to recommendations for action. We need a, for the resolution authorizing notice of honorable discharge for non-tenure teachers other than final-year probationary teachers, we need a motion for the Board of Education to adopt the resolution authorizing the notice of honorable dismissal of non-tenure teachers other than final-year probationary teachers, and that the president and secretary be authorized to sign same.
So moved.
Who did that?
That was Terry.
Terry?
Second.
And Mike?
Mike, thank you. Terry Pavisic?
Aye.
Mike Davenport?
Aye.
Cheryl Fuller?
Nay.
Dan Nicholas?
Aye.
Rick Pavanato?
Aye.
Joanna Vazquez-Drexler?
Nay.
Was it nay?
Nay.
Thank you very much. And Nancy Cupka?
Aye, the motion carries. Next, we need a resolution authorizing the notice of non-renewal to non-tenure teachers other than final-year probationary teachers. We need a motion for the Board of Education to approve the resolution authorizing notice of non-renewal to non-tenure teachers other than final-year probationary teachers, and that the president and secretary be authorized to sign same.
So moved.
Mike?
Second.
I'll second.
Dan?
Dan was next, Dan.
Dan.
Mike Davenport?
Aye.
Dan Nicholas?
Aye.
Terry Pavisic?
Aye.
Rick Pavanato?
Aye.
Joanna Vazquez-Drexler?
Aye.
Cheryl Fuller?
Aye.
Nancy Cupka?
Aye, the motion is approved. Next, we'll move on to the reward of the bid for the activity buses, motion for the Board of Education to approve the low bid for four Trans-Tech passenger multifunction student activity buses submitted by Southern Bus and Mobility, Breeze, Illinois, in the amount of $200,372, which includes the trade-in offset of the 3208, 2,008 vehicles totaling $7,500.
So moved.
Mike?
Second.
Terry?
Terry.
Mike Davenport?
Aye.
Terry Pavisic?
Aye.
Rick Pavanato?
Aye.
Joanna Vazquez-Drexler?
Aye.
Cheryl Fuller?
Aye.
Dan Nicholas?
Aye.
And Nancy Cupka?
Aye, the motion carries. Next, we need for the award of bid, World Language Office renovation at South High, a motion for the Board of Education to approve the combined list of low acceptable bidders and award contracts for the World Language Office renovation at South High in the aggregate amount of $153,412.79.
So moved.
Mike, was it Mike?
Yep.
I'll second.
Terry?
Thank you.
Thanks, Terry.
Mike Davenport?
I.
Sorry.
Go ahead.
I'm sorry. Mike Davenport?
Aye.
Terry Pavisic?
Aye.
Rick Pavanato?
Aye.
Joanna Vazquez-Drexler?
Aye.
Cheryl Fuller?
Aye.
Dan Nicholas?
Aye.
And Nancy Cupka?
Aye, motion carries. Next, we have the award of bid, air handling unit, South High, motion for the Board of Education to approve the lowest acceptable bid for air handler replacement at South High, and award Oakbrook Mechanical Services, Elmhurst, Illinois, a contract in the amount of $98,800.
Nancy? I'm sorry, I can hardly, I know where you're at, but I can hardly hear you, so if we...
Oh, that's fine, you know what, I know, I'm having a harder time hearing too.
Okay.
So moved, Nancy.
Okay, this is...
She'd like to reread it. Cheryl would like Nancy to reread it.
I didn't hear what she said, though. All right.
Oh, sorry.
It's okay.
It's, yeah, yeah, okay. Award of bid for air handling unit, South High, a motion for the Board of Education to approve the lowest acceptable bid for air handler replacement at South High, and award Oakbrook Mechanical Service, Elmhurst, Illinois, a contract in the amount of $98,800. Mike?
So moved.
So moves.
Second.
Terry.
Did you have a question, Cheryl?
No.
Oh, you look sensitive, okay. Terry?
It was Terry's second, thank you.
Terry.
Mike Davenport?
Aye.
Terry Pavisic?
Aye.
Rick Pavanato?
Aye.
Joanna Vazquez-Drexler?
Aye.
Cheryl Fuller?
Aye.
Dan Nicholas?
Aye.
Nancy Cupka?
Aye, the motion carries. Then we have the resolution authorizing property tax abatement for the Rex Nord facility for the 2019 tax year. Motion for the Board of Education to approve the resolution authorizing property tax abatement for the Rex Nord facility for the 2019 tax year.
So moved.
Mike?
Second.
Dan? Thank you. Mike Davenport?
Aye.
Dan Nicholas?
Aye.
Terry Pavisic?
Aye.
Rick Pavanato?
Aye.
Joanna Vazquez-Drexler?
Aye.
Cheryl Fuller?
Aye.
And Nancy Cupka?
Aye, the motion carries. That concludes our, that concludes that portion of the agenda, and we will now move on to old business. We need a motion for the Board of Education to approve the policies as presented, it was the second reading.
I'll make that motion, unless there's any discussion.
Need a second? Do we get a second?
Oh.
Just a first, we need a second?
What, for what?
Motion for the policy committees?
Policy committee.
Or the policy report, sorry.
Second.
Terry, you're going to second it?
Yes.
All right. So since we discussed this at the last board meeting, there's only been one recommended change that we've accepted, which is in 5.90. There was a little bit of wording in the recommended policy that made the instructions of how we're supposed to report and interact with DCFS somewhat confusing to our staff. So based on their recommendation, we reworded it just to make it more clear, but not to change the instructions or the intent. change the instructions or the intent. That is the only change since we discussed this at the last board meeting. So we're recommending that the board approve all of these policy changes. Almost all of them are tied to changes in state law that were made at the last legislative session.
Any more discussion? Okay, we have Rick and Terry.
Rick Pavanado?
Aye.
Trey Pavisic?
Aye.
Joanna Vazquez-Drexler?
Aye.
Mike Davenport?
Aye.
Cheryl Fuller?
I didn't even hear what we were saying.
We're voting on the policy committees?
Okay.
Aye.
Yes.
Thank you. And Dan Nicholas?
Aye.
Thank you.
And Nancy Cupka, the motion carries.
I apologize, Nancy Cupka.
Moving on to communications announcement, we have the report on Legislative Education Network of DuPage, Dan?
Unfortunately, I missed the meeting of Friday ago. I know Hank, you went. Was there anything at Lend?
Oh, boy. A lot has happened in the last week. No, it was just, I'm sorry, yeah, it was just a review of what the legislation that's being discussed, this is Lend, at Lend. This was a review of what was being discussed at Lend, which is just legislative updates. There was nothing-
I'm sorry, there is a discussion about the vote for the recommendation, yeah, seven. Because I am having, I apologize, we're moving pretty fast, and I'm having a hard time hearing. So I'm being told that I didn't vote appropriately.
The way that you wished to? On which one?
On seven.
On 7A? Which one?
So let's just, just so we're clear, let us revote on 7A and 7B.
Could we please? Because I'm sorry, we normally have the-
No, that's all right. It's a difficult situation in a different room.
Yeah.
Okay.
Just to be clear, 7A, 7A is a resolution authorized notice of honorable dismissal of non-10-year teachers other than final-year probationary teachers. In the administrative content, in there under 7A, all of the staff members that would be honorably dismissed under that are listed for the board to see. And they are also in the board report.
So we have a motion, we have the motion, we have a second, so let's just recast the vote, please, Julie.
Okay, let me be sure. I apologize, I'm getting over ear infection, so maybe I'm not hearing as well.
No, this is just a challenging room. It's a challenging situation. So if everybody could take a moment, because we don't have the screens here, and open up that artifact for Section B, or open up their article item, and under administrative content, it will list the employees that you are taking action on.
And we're going to, we're voting on A right now.
On 7A.
There's the confusion is between A and B.
7A is what you voted nay on. It should have been-
Because she didn't read the memo.
Aye.
Okay.
Do you need some help?
It should have been 7B is what-
Because I'm having a hard time opening a lot of my attachments. Do you need some help?
I got to open the attachment A and attachment B, so I'm looking at it.
Joanna, are you, Joanna's having some trouble.
I'm finding it for her.
Okay.
I'm in the right place.
7A and B. Okay. 7A. This one. What? This is what? Yes.
Okay. Okay, so to be clear.
Yes.
We are voting on resolution, on A. Resolution authorizing the notice of honorable dismissal of non-10-year teachers other than final probationary teachers.
Point of order?
Yep.
Are we allowed to do do-overs?
I don't think so.
You can make a motion to do a do-over.
I'm going to, you know what, I'm going to exert my prerogative just because of the situation that-
The material was provided.
The material's provided, but not everybody heard.
Material was provided, Rick, but we, I could not hear, we're moving fast, I couldn't even hear what Nancy is saying. So I wanted to go on record that I did not vote on what I thought I did.
I think we-
What could I hear in-
We can't hear.
I think we need, I think there's a process, though, to rescind what we did. And then, I'm just, I'm, it's just-
Roberts Rules of Order?
I just want to make sure we're doing it right.
So it's not, your issue is not that we're revoting, it's that we're not rescinding it properly.
Correct. I just make sure that we're doing this correctly.
We just need a motion to revote on 7A and 7B. Somebody would have to make that motion.
We need a motion to revote on 7A and 7B. Mike's making it.
No, no, I'm not. I'm thinking that the people-
I move that we revote on 7A and 7B.
Thanks, Cheryl.
Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Okay.
I'll second the motion.
And Mike seconds.
Cheryl Fuller?
We're voting on 7A.
No, you're voting on the motion to be able to revote on 7A and 7B.
Thank you. Mike Davenport?
Aye.
Dan Nicholas?
No.
Trey Pavisic?
Aye.
Rick Pavanado?
No.
Joanna Vazquez-Drexler?
Aye.
Nancy Cupka?
Aye. Now we need a motion to revote on A.
7A.
Now we need a motion to revote on 7A, the resolution authorizing notice of honorable dismissal of non-10-year teachers other than final-year probationary teachers. The motion is for the Board of Education to adopt the resolution authorizing notice of honorable discharge of non-10-year teachers other than final-year probationary teachers and that the president and secretary, myself and Julie, be authorized to sign a name, to sign same.
So moved.
So we have Mike and-
Second.
Cheryl.
Mike Davenport?
Aye.
Cheryl Fuller?
Aye.
Dan Nicholas?
Aye.
Trey Pavisic?
Aye.
Rick Pavanado?
Aye.
Joanna Vazquez-Drexler?
Aye.
Nancy Cupka?
Aye, the motion carries. Next, we have the resolution authorizing, this is B, the resolution authorizing notice of non-renewal to non-10-year teachers other than final-year probationary teachers. This is a motion for the Board of Education to approve the resolution authorizing notice of non-renewal to non-10-year teachers other than final-year probationary teachers and that the president and secretary be authorized to sign same.
So moved. Second.
Mike and Dan, was it Dan?
Just a reminder, the list of those staff are listed for the board under administrative content in board docs.
Do people need a second to vote before we vote? Cheryl and Joanna, are you ready, since you requested the-
Yes, thank you for doing that.
Joanna, are you ready?
Yes.
Okay.
Mike Davenport?
Aye.
Dan Nicholas?
Aye.
Trey Pavisic?
Aye.
Rick Pavanado?
Aye.
Joanna Vazquez-Drexler?
Nay.
Cheryl Fuller?
No.
Nancy Cupka?
Aye, the motion carries.
All right, so where we were back in communication announcements, Lend, what we got was an update on what's in the legislative session right now, which is quite a few educational bills. However, I was informed today that they have suspended the legislative session due to COVID-19, so we don't know what comes next. We'll inform the board as we learn more. That's it for the report on Lend.
Joanna, do you have a report on SASED?
Not today.
Not today? Okay. Terry, the 99 Foundation?
Pizza Wars was the-
Into your microphone.
Your microphone.
Oh, that's right, I'm sorry. I think I'm loud enough, but Pizza Wars was an extreme success. We made almost $20,000 that will go back to our students via grants and different projects. So that's very exciting. And we want to thank all of our pizza vendors.